Hello.
All right. Well, at 7:00 PM, we have a very full agenda, so I'd like to get going, if that's okay, Ron and Jonathan.
I just punched myself out. Oh, here I am.
No, there you are. We only have the top of your head, but it's all the brains are there. So that's what we're relying after.
Okay.
Okay. If you're looking for a ruling on Obamacare, you're going to be so thoroughly disappointed tonight. The Sherburne Zoning Board of Appeals. We have two matters. The first is under 40A, an amendment to a special permit. And then the next one is 40B, an application for a project known as Coolidge Crossing, or sometimes known as Coolidge Crossing. We're going to take what will hopefully be the faster one first. That is the petition of Heritage to amend their outdoor entertainment special permit at 33 North Main Street. Jen Ziskin, I see you there. I bet you're willing to speak for the Heritage. You have the floor, man.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. So I actually did a PowerPoint presentation for this. I hope that's okay. But I've never done this on Zoom, so. Share my screen?
Please do.
Okay, perfect. And then let me just get this started.
Hey, we can see it.
Good. I just have to play it. Okay, great. Okay, so we are proposing to do an outdoor ice skating rink at Heritage. Very similar to the backyard rinks that you maybe have seen before at people's homes. But also I know that the fire station in the past has also done an ice skating rink. And the reason we're doing it is to really what we've noticed and talked to with our guests, so many people have asked us if we're going to be, you know, they even called, they're like, are you still open inside, outside, you know, this weekend? We know it's going to be cold. We're basically trying to create an atmosphere to get people in the mood to be outside and continue dining outside because of the pandemic. So that's the the main reason, and just to really promote outdoor activities for the community. So this is the plot plan that we've proposed. I have a couple of them available. I have two proposals where we have flat land where it would be available. The first would have the ice rink on the street side, and then the second would have the ice rink on the side of our parking lot. So this is the one with it on the street side. We are putting up more lights, so there would be poles with light, so it would be able to be, you know, lit, so it would be safer in the evening. And you can see it shows like where the patio is. And then shows, we have one lawn seating area, which we used to have a tent, but we took the tent down because we were finding that because we couldn't heat the tent, that we, by taking that tent down, we were able to put more portable heaters out there. And this is the second lawn area, kind of our main lawn seating, and then the ice rink will be on the side of the street. We also have these benches that you see here for people to be able to put their skates on that would be near the rink, and those would also be socially distanced. This is the second layout, a little less favorable, just because we feel like having it on the street side would kind of push it out of the way. This way, people, some people leave the restaurant and they they don't go back through the patio. They actually just go out and leave through the parking lot. So it would be a little trickier, although doable, to have the rink on the side of the parking lot. But either works as well as far as on the level land. The reason we want to do it, we saw a huge dip in sales last week. You know, it was crazy, as you all know, that we had snow. And then, you know, the whole week with Halloween as well. We also feel much safer with outdoor dining. We did get new air filtrations for the pub and the main dining room, and also one near some of our private dining rooms. But it just seems, as far as all the studies go, that outside dining is the safest for the guests and also for our staff. But, you know, people are not so willing to eat outside. There's definitely a movement that people want to move inside, which we are okay with because we are very safe, but we really want to promote outside dining as much as possible. We're definitely going to, I mean, it was huge. I mean, I looked at the sales. I mean, it's a little embarrassing to show you. But this was the week of the snow that we had, where we are, we were at for the week 33,000. So October 26th to November 1st, we literally went from like fast speed craziness to, I mean, Josh is like, cut people, like, cut, 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 like, it was crazy. I mean, it was not busy. And it was because it was cold and there was no reason to sit outside. So we've got to find more reasons to get people to come and to sit outside. Because they'll come and they'll sit inside, but it's it's just not the same. There's like, I would say 60% of diners in Massachusetts are not eating inside. And so we're trying to appeal to the 60% that are still willing to be outside with this. These are the sales from this week, beautiful sunny week, and also from the weeks previous. I mean, it's huge. We can't run Heritage. I mean, it's just not possible on $33,000. It's just huge. It's, as you know, a huge property. We definitely, we need to be maximizing our sales at all time in order to survive and to survive the winter. So things that we've had in place, like even, you know, we feel like, you know, we are being so safe. We hear it all the time from our guests. We have the HIPAA air scrubbers that we just purchased. They were very expensive, but they were worth it. You know, we see guests out the back parking lot. We also started to move the host stand inside, but they can still call us, so we can do contactless, you know, go outside and have them be seated from the outside, contactless takeout and delivery, you know, we take a phone number. We had a COVID scare, as you all know, like our second week that we were open, the beginning of the summer. We handled that. I mean, the Board of Health was really impressed with how we handled that. We closed for 24 hours. We spent over $900 to deep clean the restaurant. Knock on wood, it hasn't happened again. But we are very safe, like, that's kind of our motto, and that's everything that we do for Heritage. We do, and we're rule followers, and we do it in that way. Again, like, these are all the protocols that we have in place right now with, everybody's wearing masks. We ask that all our guests wear masks. You know, credit cards to book reservations. So as far as ice skating safety, we've already contacted our insurance. We also looked at all of the Board of Health recommendations as well. We will have waivers that the skaters have to sign before they can participate. We will have a first aid kit available near the rink. We will have signage out that blocks skating during our closed hours. We have special, like, the lighting that we currently have. We're putting more lights up around the rink as well. Everyone will be wearing a mask. They will have to wear a mask on the benches. They'll have to wear a mask while they're skating. They have to wear and bring their own helmets to use the rink. The Mass Board of Health suggests no more than 10 people per 1,000 square feet of rink space. We are going to have a 2,048 square foot rink, or we're proposing a 2,048 square foot rink. I mean, again, this is like your backyard rink. That's not a huge amount of space. And we're only going to allow 10 skaters at a time on that rink. They are only going to be skating for 15-minute increments. We'll have a Google Doc signup sheet as well. So we'll have all the names and phone numbers. There won't be any sporting activities. And like I said, we have the benches and also, you know, if any other further restrictions come about, like from the Board of Health or from Governor Baker, we will add those to our ice skating safety protocols. This was the letter that I received or that you all received from the Board of Health outlining their concerns, which was super helpful, actually. I was glad that we received this because it was things that I was already addressing and things I felt really good about. Like I said, you know, you know, kind of our reason, they they felt like our reason is to attract more guests. You know, in their letter, they stated that. That's not, that's not true. I mean, we want to just retain the guests that we have. We just want to make it possible to get through the winter. It's definitely, as we saw from those two-week projection, it's going to be really challenging for Heritage to survive the winter. It's always already been challenging because of the loss of events and all with all the restrictions. I know you know about the new curfew. We lose, I mean, we lost, I would say, 30 guests on the weekend because of the new restrictions. I mean, I believe in them. I actually, I'm not opposed to the new restriction. I think it's a good idea. But it is a loss of 30 guests, you know, and that's a significant, it's like $1,500. I mean, it's a lot of money that we lose. These are the rules. They have to sign up in advance. They get a 15-minute skating session. This was so, again, this was sort of the the concern was the intent of the restaurant guidance. They were, let's see, this is just in the Board of Health letter on the left. They felt like we would be encouraging people to be onsite longer, which is actually not true at all. We have very strict seating, you know, people don't love it, but we have two hours that they can stay if they're a party of four or more on a table. If they're a party of two, it's an hour and a half. We do, and it's all like mass guidelines that we're following. We do actually have to say goodbye to people many times during the night. So we're not encouraging people to stay longer. So ideally, they'll be skating during their dining. I think a lot of parents are hoping to be dining and their children skating for that 15-minute increment. And then if they do want to stay after dinner, if that's their signup for after their dinner, they're welcome to do that. But then from that, from the rink, they'll go to their car. They won't be re-entering the restaurant after that. And these are, you know, our set hours that we have. There will not be additional time allowed for people, and that'll be very clear when they sign up for skating. I mean, there might not even be skating because it might be too warm, God willing, for skating. That's kind of our goal. But we're just trying, if it's not warm this winter, we're trying to be prepared. So we're willing to, actually, we have someone who's donating the rink because it is, you know, quite expensive, but we're willing to take the risk to have the rink. But we're actually hoping that it'll never freeze. We're hoping it'll be warm. These are just the dimensions. So it's a 32-by-64-foot rink that we're looking at, that our friend who's building the rink also and he's buying the rink would like to install. The, according to the Board of Health and the mass guidelines, it allows for 20 skaters, and we're just going to be allowing 10 skaters at a time. For the most part, I'm assuming they'll be from the same party or the same household in their 15 minutes. But again, they might be from a different household, but as long as we adhere to that 10-skater rule, we will be sticking to the guidelines. You know, that will be compliant with all the COVID safety. My son plays hockey, so I'm well aware of all the rules that they need to adhere to and enforcing the masks. They must have their own skates. They must wear a mask at all time. I mean, we're, I mean, I feel like a masked policewoman at all times. I mean, I'm constantly telling people to put their mask on at all times. So we will continue to be monitoring that for the ice skating rink. And then we also have to obviously have their name and phone number for contact tracing. They will have a waiver that they have to sign. That's for insurance reasons. We spoke to our insurance. We will have proper insurance to cover. Of course, there won't be any accidents, but you always have to be sure to cover everything that could happen. These are the signs that we'll have. That we also want to be sure that they're skating in one direction, no food or drink, because then they won't be able to be wearing their mask. Plus, we don't want food and drink on the, on the rink, and that they'll be wearing their mask. And then these were just comments I pulled from people that have been dining at Heritage. I just feel like I have heard time and time again that people just feel really safe there. They're so happy. I mean, the, I can't remember. I think it was Saturday night. Obviously, there are times that not everybody's happy, and we're a little slow with service, but they're just so happy that we're doing outside dining and that we're keeping them safe, and we're, you know, all wearing our masks. They see us with gloves and sanitizing. So we will only be taking all of the things that we already practiced to this other outside activity. This one's a little smaller. I don't know if you can read it, but but that's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public on the proposed, oh, and I assume that what you want is an amendment to your existing special permit to allow this?
Yes.
Got it.
Mr. Novak, can I make a comment?
Yes.
This is Matt Vitale, sort of both wearing Board of Health hat and Sherburne resident hat. So I would say absolutely, in terms of Heritage's response to the COVID episode at the beginning, summer really demonstrated best practices. I think they're actively engaged. They're good partners for the Food Inspector. They're very proactive, and they've taken all the steps that helped us manage it and minimize the risk. So I'd echo Jen's comments there. Just one point of clarification I would offer is where Jen was describing the Board of Health, all those guidances came from Mass DPH. So Ellen had reached out to DPH on behalf of the Sherburne Board of Health. And so all those restrictions and guidance pieces there were DPH interpretations of the regs as opposed to Board of Health regs. But I think that Ms. Ziskin described them appropriately. I think the biggest concern that came through in her letter to us was the importance of trying to minimize dilly-dallying, which I think Ms. Ziskin's proposal does with the 15-minute increments. I think the other things I would do as much as possible are preventing mixing between groups of guests to the degree that that's feasible. That was the other area that DPH highlighted as being a source of possible concern. That was a recommendation on their part, not a requirement, but they sort of recommended as much as possible clearly parsing out dining and skating activities and kind of preventing mixing and matching between groups as much as possible to further reduce the risk. But I think everything Ms. Ziskin described was consistent with the guidance we got from DPH. And again, I would just echo a consistent pattern by the business of being engaged and proactive and making sure they're keeping our community safe.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public?
Rick, Stephen Constantine, 32 North Main Street. Yeah, I've just got some more questions for Jennifer and also a couple suggestions. So so the rink's going to be professionally installed, or how's that going to be done? And what about maintenance? Is there going to be some regular maintenance done?
Yes, you have to have regular maintenance with the rink. But like all backyard rinks, we are going to be doing that ourselves. We're going to be buying all of the necessary supplies to maintain it, like a mini Zamboni, have a hose ready, all of those things for sure. And it's being installed by someone who installs their own rink every year. So they've been, and then a team with that person. He's had his own backyard rink. He's done the installation using this particular rink year after year. I was actually going to have someone, like one of the sports centers, install it, but because so many people have said that it's so easy to install, and then this person volunteered their services to install it, we thought that was better.
And you'll be using the Heritage's water? You're not going to bring it in with a water truck or anything?
No, we'll use Heritage's water.
Okay, all right. So what are the hours of operation?
It would be open when Heritage is open.
So that's, so what, 11 to noon? I mean, 11 to 9:30?
We're, no, not anymore. Well, we're, well, I guess we're open until we're closed. Our last meeting is 7:45, 8 at the latest. And then we open Monday through Friday at noon and Saturday and Sunday at 10:00.
And 7:30 is your last meeting?
7:45.
7:45, okay.
With the new COVID restrictions.
Okay. You mentioned there's going to be additional lighting for the rink. How about loudspeakers, music, additional?
No additional loudspeakers are being added.
Okay. And then the 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 suggestions I had is I prefer that the rink were at the the back towards the parking lot. You said that was your second choice. And then the other thing I wanted to suggest, I know I brought this up in the past, is putting up a fence along North Main. I think that would do several things. Now that you're doing more outside dining, it would protect your patrons from car noise, truck noise, motorcycle noise. It would also act as a wind block, so you don't have the wind whipping across there. And then, of course, it's going to protect the downtown neighbors as well. So I'd like to see a fence put up along North Main.
We can try to raise money for that. I do not think that is in the budget, unfortunately, right now. There's a stone fence that's up currently that does as the property line, but I don't think I can afford that right now.
A six-foot fence going across that back area? I think we, I think when I took a look at it last time, it was going to be at $6,000, $7,000 to have that installed.
Okay, we can start a fund. As I showed you the numbers, it's kind of scary stuff going on at Heritage right now. It's not, it's not easy for restaurants. I'm sure you've been reading in the news. We are closing by the minute, and it's.
I'm looking at it as a win-win for both sides. It'll help your patrons. It'll also help the folks in the downtown area.
So there have been a lot of town grants, and a lot of cities are doing things for restaurants. And I think that would be an amazing thing. We would definitely put up a fence if the town funded it. You know, or if one of these mass funds, I know a bunch just came out. I actually haven't even had time today to take a look. I'm working on some new funds. I mean, I'm constantly, I have, I mean, I just received the MRA grant for $5,000 for women business owners. I received from Pellegrino. I mean, I am applying for every single grant to stay alive. You have no idea. Putting up a fence would not be a priority for us right now. We have, we're just making it. But I would love it if the town would support that. I mean, I know Brookline is supplying heaters. I mean, I literally, I I do 14 heaters every, 14 propane tanks every three days for those heaters. It's, it's expensive. Outside dining is, it's so expensive. So if the town wants to work on any type of grants that would help Heritage, that would be amazing, and that could be a great proposal.
So I guess looking at the ZBA, Rick or the committee, do you guys know if there's anything available like that?
We can discuss it when we get to our board discussions. I'm I'm not aware of any, but, you know, you 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 had a list of questions. We want to hear you. Let us know when you're, when you're through your question list and.
Yeah, I went through the question list. I think I'm good with that. It was just the suggestions of, number one, keeping it towards the end, towards the parking lot, and also putting a fence along North Main.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Anyone else from the public who wants to be heard on the skating rink? Marian?
Yeah. First of all, Jen, we know you're really trying hard with this, and we certainly, you certainly have our, our support and sympathy. One, one thing that shouldn't cost you anymore is just a heads up on the lighting. I'm sure you'll do this, but make sure it's not directed toward the neighbors and that it's directed down so we can, you know, keep our dark skies as dark as possible. Thanks.
Definitely, yep, definitely.
All right. Other, other public comments on the ice skating rink proposal? Going once, going twice? Genie, I don't see anybody. All right, board members. Your feelings are important to me. How do you feel about this?
I feel generally positive. With me, it's a matter of whether the Board of Health will approve their proposal or not.
Right. And and we can condition our, our approval on them getting the blessing for the Board of Health. We do that often, and it's a good idea.
Well, I also support the idea fully, subject to what Ron just mentioned about Board of Health approval, if it's required. I think it's an ambitious idea. I, I can't remember how many days last winter we had that were cold enough to maintain an ice rink.
Yeah.
But well, as you, Jen, hopefully, it'd be so warm that won't present a problem.
I mean, I actually think that would be a blessing, because if it's warm enough not to maintain the ice rink, then it's going to be warm enough to eat outside, and people won't mind. So I think, obviously, it'll be great to have the ice rink, but that we're a restaurant, we're not an ice. You know, that's not our intention. We definitely, we'd rather it be warm and not be able to freeze the ice than it be cold and have the ice rink. Because, you know, dining is our first intention, but just creating this outside kind of winter wonderland for our guests is, is important. So they feel excited about coming when it gets cold. I mean, I think there are a lot of people that aren't going to be able to eat inside, and we want to be able to accommodate them and excite them about coming to Heritage all winter.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Genie, there's somebody who isn't muted.
Yeah, I'm looking, and I can't.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll, we'll figure it out. Board members, how do you feel about the location, street side or parking lot side? The opponent clearly wants street side. The most, the nearest butter clearly wants parking lot side. What are your thoughts?
Well, I don't have a strong view on this, Rick. I think I would leave it to the discretion of the owner to put the rink where she thinks it's going to be most appealing. I was wondering if it's on the street side, is it going to be some kind of a distraction to traffic at all? I don't know. It could, it could be, could be nice visually on the, on the street side. But I think it's on the parking lot side, it will have a tendency to be a little more out of view and of the public back there. Might be a benefit to that.
Right. Ron, any, you're, you're an architect. You've got a much better design sense than at least me. Any of this obvious to you?
I don't think it's necessarily a matter of design. I think it's, you know, how it works for the restaurant in terms of any kind of marketing advantage to have the the ice rink one place or another. You know, my initial thought was that maybe it would be on the parking lot side, but I don't have a strong opinion.
My own view is that I'm inclined to defer to the owner and what's going to be most effective for a, an already difficult-to-run business. The street side probably going to be easier to police when, when people aren't supposed to be using it, someone sneaking out in the night. I think one thing we might want to condition is that if, if the police say it's a problem, it's going to have to go. If the police say it's a problem because it's distracting drivers or because people are sneaking, waiting for Jen to close down every night and then sneaking out and playing hockey. But I, I, I think we can handle that by condition as opposed to assuming it's going to be a problem. And 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 on the fence issue, I'm not aware of any town funds for this. I don't see Dave Williams jumping up and down volunteering to fund it. So I'm going to assume that probably is not in the cards, and since it's does not appear that there's going to be town money available for it, I'm disinclined to require a fence at this point. What, how do the two of you feel about that?
Well, yeah, I don't know of any funds either. If there, if there were some, that would be wonderful, but probably aren't any.
Well, I agree. I think everybody would welcome some state funds if they existed for this purpose, but I would not condition this project on fence being put up. this project on fence being put up.
Unless the members have further discussion, I'd be open to hearing a motion. Anyone inclined to make one, Jonathan?
Yes, I'd be happy to make a motion to that we amend the existing special permit for outdoor entertainment at the Heritage to permission for a, an ice rink to be maintained. Subject to the conditions described by the owner in her presentation to us.
And would you accept a friendly amendment that it be on the, located on the street side? And in compliance with all conditions of the Sherburne Board of Health?
Yes.
All right. I'd second that amended motion. Further, further discussion?
No.
On favor, I?
I.
Opposed? All right, Genie carries three, nothing. Jen, thank you for your time. Stephen, thank you for yours. You're obviously welcome to listen to Coolidge Crossing as long as you wish.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, next up in the batting order, Baystone Sherburne LLC. We are wearing our chapter forty B hat. Often when we're kicking off discussion of a forty B, there's a narrative on what the rules are and how it works and how it doesn't work. I see so many familiar names from the prior forty Bs in this area that I'm going to skip that speech at this point. If people want to raise any questions, we can. Baystone, in your narrative, you'll probably go through the history from the prior Coolidge Crossing, because otherwise people will be confused. But and Todd, I'm looking at you. You'll give us some history on that?
Yes, Stephanie is going to start us off with the presentation and show off a little history as will Roy.
All right, great. So one, one final pre kickoff item that will make sense to you and Stephanie. I'll bet you'll be able to answer these questions easily. The issue of site control is a live one on another project in town, as, as you may have heard. You don't own this site now, do you?
We do not.
But you do have a binding purchase and sale for it that's in full force and effect?
Yes.
And does anybody else have any rights to buy it under purchase option, right of first refusal, left-hand thread, purchase and sale agreement, anything like that?
On one parcel on eighty-four Coolidge Street, Polty has the penis and we have the, with the current owner. And we have a penis through Polty to purchase the property via them.
Right, but nobody has any rights to buy your rights?
No.
All right. Those are the questions we needed. Thank you. You have the floor. Please proceed.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Stephanie Kiefer and I'm with the law firm of Smolak and Vaughn in North Andover. And I'm here this evening as counsel to the applicant Baystone Sherburne LLC. And with me this evening, we have a number of members of our project team who we will hear from shortly. Todd and Roy McDowell, both principals of the applicant. We also have with us this evening our project architect, Rob Schaefer of RA Schaefer and DM White, and our traffic engineer, Robert Michaud of MDM Traffic Consultants or Transportation Consultants, pardon me. For this evening, our goal is to provide the board and the public with an introduction to the Coolidge Crossing comprehensive permit proposal, provide you a general overview of the proposed project. And you know, as with any of these forty B projects, you know, there's the understanding that there will be significant, that there will be more significant details that are going to come to the board be presented at future hearings in terms of layout, traffic, stormwater landscaping, et cetera. Our purpose and intent this evening, however, is to present to you the proposed multifamily community that we're proposing. Introduce you to some of the key members of our project team. Field any initial questions that the board may have. And from there, we can work through the, the continued hearing processes, hopefully identifying somewhat of the major questions that the board may have this evening that'll help us define the focus of further hearings. And I anticipate our presentation this evening will last roughly about forty-five minutes exclusive of any questions that the board may have or any members of the project team or if public comments being taken this evening, any public comment. So first what I'm sorry.
I just said, thank you. When you said it would take forty-five minutes.
Okay. What I would like to do is first, I'm going to provide a very general overview of the project. At that point, I'm going to turn the discussions over to Roy and Todd McDowell to provide you with, as you suggested, some sort of a history of how the Coolidge Crossing project has come to be before you, as well as to introduce you to Baystone, the applicant and the project team. And I from there, Todd's also going to walk you through the, the basic site layout of it. At that point in our presentation, we will turn it over to our project architect to walk you through the the elevations, the proposed buildings. And from there, last and not least, of course, our, our traffic engineer, Bob Michaud from MDM Transportation to walk you through traffic generation, circulation, access matters. And finally, we'll just conclude with some final thoughts that we have on, on the project and moving forward with the zoning board in terms of hearings. And by the end of the evening, we hope to identify any of the key questions that the board may have. And so without further ado, unless there's any questions that you may have right now, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll just give you a brief overview of project information before I turn it over to Todd and Roy.
That sounds great. Please proceed as you've outlined.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. As you'll see on the screen before you, we have an overview of the proposed development site. And it's, it's an aerial rendering of, of the project and the, the address is eighty-four and eighty-six Coolidge Streets. It's portions of those two properties and Todd McDowell will explain to you in his discussion, which will be more detailed. The, the project site is approximately fifteen point two acres. Eighty-four point eighty-six combined or slightly more than that, but there's going to be a little portion to the, what looks like to the rear of the property, but it may actually be to the east or southeast of the property that will be that will go to Meadowbrook and it will be used as open space apart, as part of their elderly and affordable project. And then on the Coolidge Street side that there is, there are two existing houses on the property at present. The, the one house, I believe the address is the eighty-four Coolidge, or pardon me, eighty-six Coolidge, that will be carved out as a, as a separate freestanding house lot that is not part of the comprehensive permit application. It'll be a zoning compliant, client lot with the existing house preserved. There's an, another second house on this site, which is in a rather dilapidated condition that will be taken down as part of the project. And as Todd, I think we'll get into, just to explain to the Baystone Sherburne's project, it, it is a separate and distinct project from the Polty Homes Meadowbrook, which is to the, you just look at the screen to the top of the screen, if you will. But it's relevant in two respects to art, to the to Baystone's project. And, and that is one, that the Polty project started working with the towns of Framingham and with Natick for water and sewer service, which Baystone will be joining in on that. So the the utilities of water and sewer will not be on site, but they will be through intermunicipal agreements with, with Framingham for water and Natick for sewer. And again, Todd can explain that to you. But, but the second part of this is that the, the Polty project came before the town in the twenty seventeen special town meeting in December, I believe. At, at that point, it was approved to be an E and A to, for a zoning amendment for it to be included into the elderly and affordable with the understanding that the eighty-four, eighty-six project would be developed as a forty B project. And in, in, in that regard, Polty has identified Baystone to work with to develop this and Baystone looked at the site and from there started working with the town as Todd will get into. And so the, the project and the application that's been presented is a local initiative project. And what that means basically is that prior to coming here this evening and even prior to filing for project eligibility with the state DHCD, Baystone had numerous public meetings with the select board seeking for their endorsement of a lip application that subsequently was filed. So over the, the past several months in April and then in June and then again in August, Baystone and his, and his representatives met at public meetings with the select board showing the, the project plans and ultimately showing the, the full draft application that was to be submitted to the state, asking the select board for its endorsement and sponsorship of the project as a lip. And we're very pleased after those months of public outreach that the select board did agree to endorse it and letters of support for the project were submitted on behalf of the select board. Similarly, the Housing Partnership also submitted a letter of support to the DHCD. And then just last month, on October fifteenth, the DHCD issued our project eligibility letter approving the project. And through that project eligibility letter, as the board is probably getting all too familiar with the under forty V, it made those, those required findings of project eligibility that the site was generally appropriate, developer was generally appropriate, that there was site control. And with that project eligibility, we then compiled the full application that's been submitted to the board. And so the, the project that we're proposing this evening, it includes, it's a multifamily project of a hundred and twenty dwelling units and they will be set out within three buildings on the site, on the fifteen acre site. And included with the project is a, a clubhouse building that is closest to the street. It will be a, a kind of a low building and it offers some great amenities for this, for this entire community. It is, it will have shared office space. It will have a gym and a yoga studio. There's a pool. There's also a dog park and there's connections through the property through a trail system on the Meadowbrook that will then lead to Peters Hill. So the intent here is, is to very much create a, a community that that works for the site and that works with the site. And we've done that through the site design as well as the architectural design of the project. And in terms of forty B somewhat logistics, as I mentioned, this community is going to be a hundred and twenty units. The buildings will be forty-two units, forty-two units and one building will be a thirty-six unit. In terms of what that means for the town, the town, because it's a rental project, the town will then be, be entitled to use all one hundred and twenty units of the proposal towards the S H I, which, which will satisfy the, the town's ten percent affordable housing state requirements. The, the town currently, or at least as of the time that we were submitting the, the applications was around two point three percent, I believe. So to get the town within the ten percent or exceeding the ten percent is a huge benefit. Similarly, the, as I mentioned, it's twenty-five percent will be available to low and moderate income housing families. So that is thirty units. What that also means is that there is an ability for seventy-five percent of the project, ninety units as market rate multifamily, which when I read through the town's master plan and its housing production plan, diversity of housing type is, is a very central need that's been identified in both documents. I, somewhere, I believe it's in the housing plan, it, it referenced that ninety-two percent of residents are living in single family homes and, and that there, there's a need for diversity of, of housing stock, specifically multifamily and, and rental housing stock. And so we're very excited that this project will provide that as well.
Excuse me, I do have one question. Could you explain to me at what point can the town use all one hundred and twenty units towards the S H I?
The, when it, when it can do that is basically it, it's, once it's approved. So for any applications that were previously filed, those would not be subject to if, if the board were to subsequently approve this, it can't count that. So it would be based on the approval date and, and then the regulations provide that. It, it's on the date unless there's been an appeal by the board and then it's when the date that's resolved. And then there's a presumption. I think it's a year that you'll, you'll have the units counted on the S H I and then building permits are to be issued within a year. And if they're not, then it may temporarily come back on. But once the building permits come on, then there's another six months for development. So, so there's a, a few little triggers. But that, that, that it can fall off temporarily until like for some reason, there's a delay in getting the building permits or, or getting them built. But the, the short answer really is that for anything that was filed prior to this application, even though this application, if it's subsequent approved, the prior ones won't be impacted, but the future ones would be in the date of approval.
Any, any projects filed subsequent to the, the date of approval on this board?
Jen, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's a complicated matrix. I think Stephanie has done a good job of trying to I'll use the word, you know, apply to myself, dumb it down for us. But, but it, but it is pretty complicated. And you know, projects have to get finished. This project would need to make sure it got its water and sewer, which is a obviously a gating factor for it and other projects that have other challenges would have to get over their hurdles. So I would say to the average person listening in, it, in general, first in time is first and right. But I think Stephanie, you would probably agree that there are a whole lot of qualifications to that general rule here.
There are, and I, I'm happy to, if the board wants me to provide in writing how the regulations work out exactly, but exactly as I suggested, generally it is, but there's a few caveats here and there.
Well, let's move ahead with your presentation because I think Jonathan did a good job of flagging what's an important issue, but it's not one we'll be able to run to earth tonight, no matter how late we stay.
Okay.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
All right. Um, I, I think with that, I've probably overrun my own lot of five minutes that I gave myself. And so what I would like to do is turn this over. I'm, I'm sorry. I think we were going to have Roy speak first as to who Baystone is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you for the board for meeting with us this evening. I'd like to start to give you a little brief overview of who our development team is. Baystone Sherburne is actually the Baystone Development Company, which includes Todd, my son Roy, Eric Swenson and myself, the, of the players that you'll be speaking with this evening. Our architect is Rob Schaefer with Schaefer White, who's with us this evening. They have a lot of experience in multifamily housing. Our civil engineer is a civil design group, Matt Leidner, who can't be with us this evening, but Todd will be representing his work this evening. They also have a lot of experience in multifamily housing. And of course, Stephanie Kiefer, who's with us this evening from Smolak and Vaughn, which obviously does a lot of multifamily and forty B housing. Our landscape architect, Hawk Design, who we've used in the past and have had good experience with. Our traffic consultant, MDM Transportation Consultants, Rob Michaud is with us this evening. And our wetlands consultant is Creative Land and Water Engineering, Duchang Wang, who has represented us in front of the Conservation Commission on a couple of occasions. Just to give you a little background on Baystone Development, sometime when you get a chance, you can look at our website, but we have over eighty years of combined experience in the industry between multifamily housing, land planning, land development. We've developed over four thousand units of housing, over two million square feet of commercial space. And what we do right now on things when we build my multifamily and Sherburne is a good example. we intend to permit it, build it and own it. We plan on having onsite management. Our goal is long-term management of properties for the long term. Uh, we've done a lot of projects recently that we're maintaining, we'll get to those in a minute. We've won a number of awards for our multifamily projects from various, um, we've gotten awards from Mass uh, Mass Historical, we've got awards, architectural review, design awards. A couple of our recent projects, the Buckley in Framingham uh, is a two hundred and ten unit project. This is very recently just completed. This was a failed strip center in Framingham, approximately six acres. Uh, we went through the zoning process through the Z B A and the planning board. We got a lot of endorsement by the neighborhood because we're going to build something that's vibrant to the neighborhood, which also includes a freestanding restaurant that's in the process of getting its liquor license as we speak. And we think this project turned out well, it's got a lot of rave reviews, I think, in the community. Next. This is Beach House in Revere. This was a vacant piece of land on the ocean on Revere Beach Boulevard. This is two hundred and thirty-four units of housing. We've got a lot of amenity space on the site. We actually have ocean views the entire length to the front of the building and we have wetlands, marsh views in the rear of the building. So it's uh, quite a vibrant situation. This is a pool on the second elevation of the building overlooking the ocean. Next one we have here, this is a, a more modest project in Weston. This was actually an early lip program of forty B in Weston. It was a small sixteen unit project, fully supported by the town of Weston and it's been quite successful. Little, little project history, as, as the chairman had said, this project has been around for a little while. Originally in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, Trust Development proposed a forty B rental component on the Coolidge Street side and a forty B condo community on the, the other side, the backside of the property. And then in two thousand seventeen, Trust worked closely with the planning board on a redesign where there was an uh, affordable and elderly component in the rear of sixty-seven townhomes. Now this went to town meeting at the time and as you can see, it got voted eighty-six and point seven percent approval. So it seems to be quite popular with the understanding that uh, the front piece would be an affordable multifamily component. Now, for whatever reason, Trust decided not to move forward with that and put the property under agreement with Pulte. Now, Pulte is moving forward with the Meadowbrook Commons in the backside of the property and we've done a lot of business with Pulte in the past and they brought us in to look at doing the forty B component in the front portion of the property. Now, some of you may remember, the front building was very large. It was a big L-shaped building that was much closer to the street than what we're proposing. And we made an agreement with our adjacent neighbor to acquire their property, we have that under agreement. What that allowed us to do is rather having two large buildings, we broke it down to three buildings, we're able to move the buildings further away from the street. And in one instance, moving the third building so much further back, you really can't see it from the street. So we feel that the hundred and twenty units broken down into three buildings helps break down the scale of the mass. And at the same time, what we've done is built a clubhouse out front that's more in the scale of a single family home. To break down a little summary of what Coolidge Crossing would be, as, as Stephanie had mentioned, it's a hundred and twenty units broken down into three buildings on approximately fifteen acres of land with a clubhouse. The buildings are designed to sort of a modern farmhouse style, which Rob will get into with a, a little while. We're trying to keep it more in keeping with, with a community and uh, a suburban feel, farm feel, if you will. We have forty-two one-bedroom units, sixty-six two-bedroom units and twelve three-bedroom units. Um, the requirements do require a certain number of three-bedroom units, so we've met that requirement. Looking at the unit sizes, the one-bedroom units average about seven hundred and ninety square feet. The two-bedroom units about eleven hundred square feet and the three-bedroom units thirteen hundred plus square feet. Now, I will tell you, these unit sizes, because it's in Sherbin, are slightly larger than if this project, let's say we're in Framingham or Wolfham or somewhere closer to the city. We feel that given the environment here, we think there are going to be a lot of empty nesters. And uh, so we, we've made accommodations for that. All the buildings will include elevators. Some projects like this, they do three-story walk-up. We think, again, knowing who we think a lot of our audience is going to be, we think that it's really imperative to have elevators in the buildings. Now, another unique feature is all the units will have balconies, not necessarily true in a lot of other projects. We have a hundred and seventy parking spaces and an additional thirty parking spaces and garages for a total of two hundred parking spaces. A parking ratio is about one point six seven spots per unit, which we think is more than adequate. We also have enclosed trash areas for the three buildings. Now, the site locust, we all know where this is, but just to give a little context, we're about a mile from downtown, which provides a nice access for services and recreation for residents. The property abuts town forest and Peters Hill walking trails to the south. Into the east, it abuts the Rockwood Road with public walking connections and to connection to municipal fields, Laurel Farms. On site, we're proposing connecting the rear of the property to connect to the trail system on Meadowbrook Commons property. And you'll see that in the future on Pulte's plans as well. Across the street, we have Sweet Meadow Farm and the Associated Farm Stand. And site proximity to the MBTA in Weston, it is only approximately a mile and a half away, so it's got good logistics. This sort of gives you a sense of uh, locust plan. You can see here where we're very close to the town of Natick Lines and the town of Framingham Lines and of course, Spine Street going over to the shopping areas. Our clubhouse is, we, we always like to do a first-class clubhouse. We can thinks it's a great leasing amenity. So we have co-working areas in the clubhouse, we have a chef's kitchen, a gym with a yoga room, a community lounge for residents, conference rooms, a lot of people like to, excuse me, work near home. We have a leasing and management office. I think it's important to mention that we have leasing staff onsite at all times during uh, working hours and we have onsite management for maintenance as well. We have an outdoor pool with a terrace area adjacent to the clubhouse, outdoor grilling areas with fire pits. We have a dog park, as someone mentioned earlier. We have some activity areas on our lawn areas. We have bicycle parking and we have car charging stations, which I think is very important today. We're also working with the M W R T H to provide a bus stop area in the front of the property. Some green features we have on the project, the project has been designed and constructed as, as Energy Star and Mass A project. Appliances will be Energy Star rated to lower the stand electrical load. We're going to utilize framing techniques to minimize thermal bridging. The walls will be insulated with blown-in cellulose, on-demand gas combination tankless hot water heaters. All interior lighting will be LED. We do that in all our projects now, it saves tremendously in the amount of electricity used. And it's very beneficial for the residents as well from a cost point of view. Will be a compliance with all D E P storm water management standards. We're going to have low-flow toilets, faucets and showerheads. We'll have high-efficiency heating systems with Aquatherm, uh, bicycle storage, as I had mentioned earlier. All exterior lighting will be LED as well. And again, we'll have car charging stations, so we think these will, some good green features.
And I'll take over uh, from Roy uh, for there. I'll be acting as our civil engineer for the evening because unfortunately, Matt Leidner from Civil Design Group could not make it. Um, just to jump backwards for a second onto the locust uh, side, just wanted to show you the exact location of the site in relation to the town of Natick in the city of Framingham. It's pretty close to both and that kind of opens up, opens the opportunity for us as we'll get into about the water and sewer. Now, uh, the site is actually made up of two sites, it's eighty-four and eighty-six Coolidge. Lot one, as you can see here is the development site, it'll be about fifteen point two acres. And lot two is the Meadowbrook Commons site. This back portion that you can see I'm circling right back here is actually part of eighty-four Coolidge. But Pulte is going to retain that to be open space as part of the Meadowbrook Commons project. And we will have a trail uh, that connects, which I'll show you in a second, back to there. And then that trail will connect over to the, or under the power line units and to Peters Hill. Lot three is what we will be eighty-six Coolidge. It currently is the existing house and that is what the new lot will be and it's a conforming lot and house. And as you can see, this is the aerial and eighty-six will be maintained like this. The power lines on the right side of the slide are the uh, to the south. As you can see, the, the slide, the field is right here and then there is some wooded area as well, where it was formerly part of eighty-six Coolidge will now be part of the development site. This is the project uh, site rendering. The main entrance will be down here on Coolidge Street. This is really where all traffic will come and go. Uh, Bob Ashad will get into the sightline, but we meet all those regulations. And when you pull in, we actually have all the way to the rear, a fire access road to the Meadowbrook Commons driveway. And that will allow fire trucks, we did just turn design radiuses for the largest slider truck in Sherbin and it's able to access all the areas, uh, even in part of building one and do a turnaround there as well. As you come in, as Roy mentioned, there's two hundred parking spots. As you see, most of them are surface parking spots with thirty garage spaces. Uh, we wanted to give uh, people the opportunity to have a place to store their car. Uh, you know, we are expecting a little bit of an older demographic here and a lot of them uh, uh, older people like to keep their cars in the garage so completely keep the snow off and all that, it's a little bit of an amenity. Um, the M W R T A bus stop we're proposing is right up here. Right there will be a turnoff, so it wouldn't be a big turnaround. And we are working with M W R T A to get that approved. Uh, there are sidewalks throughout the site that really allow the residents to navigate the site and it connects to the trail system that will then connect over to the woods into Meadowbrook Commons. The trails in the sidewalks are basically supposed to get everyone down to the clubhouse. We really, one of the things Roy mentioned, we, we put a lot into our clubhouses, we try to create a real sense of community in, in these neighborhoods uh, with the outdoor space for the pool, grilling areas, an outdoor fire pit with an outdoor TV, an activity lawn for resident events and get-togethers. Um, and you know, one of the other things uh, you'll see is um, the dog park is up here, just another place for residents to get together and have their dog in a fenced in area. Um, that will uh, be a nice place to be. Uh, the buildings, as, as Roy and Stephanie mentioned, we have the clubhouse out front, which is about one and a half stories tall. It kind of breaks up the mass of when you're viewing the property from Coolidge Street. And then there's the three residential buildings. As you see, there's wetlands on either side of the uh, property. We have been to Conservation Commission and completed two NOIs, which uh, we delineated uh, the wetlands and that has been, both of those have been approved by Concom. And as we have designed the site, uh, we really made every effort and kept all the buildings and pavement out of the fifty-foot buffer. Um, there may be some minor grading uh, in stormwater storage uh, within that fifty-foot buffer, but all the impervious and building area is outside of that fifty-foot buffer. And you know, one of the things Roy mentioned, when we initially started looking at the site, we had a building one being a large kind of L when we started talking with the select board. And through, after we put the property under agreement next door, we were able to spread the project out a little bit and really harmonize it with the site and taking advantage of the different elevations and the, the layout. So we, we felt it was a much improved project once we were able to get the additional land to the rear. Um, one of the other things we've done is we've done a significant amount of soil testing. So we have a preliminary stormwater design and we've uh, checked the groundwater and the soil quality. And uh, we'll be able to meet all D E P standards and you know, that's an ongoing uh, design, but we have done a significant amount of that already. Um, utilities, utilities, right now, we are going to be getting gas, electric, data and telephone from the existing lines in Coolidge Street. And uh, as we've mentioned, we are negotiating with Pulte uh, two intermunicipal agreements. One is with Framingham for the water and that is proposed to come down Spine Street to Coolidge Street. Then it would go up uh, Meadowbrook Commons driveway and then connect to our site via the uh, emergency, the gated emergency access here, that's gated, so you won't have resident, other people using that. Uh, the sewer will connect, come through Meadowbrook Commons as well and then come down through uh, the same areas as proposed currently. Uh, when it, all the three buildings, four buildings, excuse me, will have the sewage flow to a pump station that's located right here. And then that will be in a force main up the, because it's, uh, there's some grade change going up to the Meadowbrook Commons site. And then it will reach the Natick system and become a gravity line. Um, both those intermunicipality agreements are uh, making progress. Good about them and uh, there's an ongoing uh, negotiation. Um, I think that is it and I'm going to introduce Rob Schaefer from uh, Schaefer and White Architects.
Well, good evening from sunny New Hampshire tropical coastline. What I'd like to do is just start off just to say that what my experience has been that we specialize in multifamily housing projects such as uh, medium-scale apartments throughout the eastern and southern New Hampshire region. We've been in practice, I've been practicing for about thirty years in this area of architecture and I worked under an architect that started back in the early seventies, building or designing excellent uh, projects for all the stakeholders. They're all very successful projects and he has a good reputation for that. Uh, the team that we've assembled here has put forth great effort to make this project work for the site and the surrounding area. I thought I'd give you a quick background is how we got to where we are now. Um, first, we start off with um, one building. See, like they said previously, the L-shaped building. We found that was very difficult to make it really fit the site with the wetlands and um, wooded areas to make best use of the site. Uh, so one of the things that Baystone also emphasized from the beginning was they'd like to keep this as a three-story building or a three-story project. Uh, a lot of our projects are four and five stories and make better use of the site, but this site really looks appropriate to have three stories on it, so we stuck with that as well. Um, to work through the uh, project design. After the exercising as much as we could on the one-building approach, we um, tried a two-building approach and this was with the amenities in the building. And so therefore the footprints were still fairly large and still struggled with feeding those on the site, making, respecting the wetlands, making good use of the site and the surrounding area. Uh, but then also what came into play was the parking spaces that we would need to have for that number of units. So in discussions, we decided to look at the back half of that neighboring site and that provided some great opportunities. Around that same time, we looked at doing the three-building scheme, as you see here. And by putting that third building in the back, it takes a third of the project mass and puts it towards the back, out of sight from the front, but also spreads it out, makes a very comfortable layout for the buildings, offering good space around them, breathing room, they're not right up against each other, provides great views for the residents there of the wooded and wetland areas around. It's my opinion, so really a wonderful site to work with for project of this type. So then with that scheme, um, we uh, looked at, we're pulling the amenity areas out of the building and keeping the, the main buildings as the residential apartments and provide the opportunity to put the clubhouse in the front as a low-scale residential scale building. And by putting it at the front, it minimizes that impact along the street view into the site, as you can see here. It offers uh, the different roof shapes as well with the gables and front, a front Front, a front porch, a back pergola, things that reflect what you would see with a house. And so it also provided additional screening for the building behind, as you'll see coming up. It also provides a a more inviting entrance to the site so that visitors and tenants feel more welcome coming in. They're not. Greeted with a three story building, they're greeted with a one story residential sized building that looks open and uh inviting for them to use and. And enjoy their social times together. Behind the clubhouse, as you can see on the right, is the pool and um outdoor gathering areas. There's, as Todd mentioned, there's a fire pit you'll see on the planet in a moment, um in the pool and the activity area. So it all blends. And flows through from the clubhouse out into the side area. These are all elements you might often see on a house as well, so it reflects that to those that are seeing the site. As they go by or in the area. Next, I'll go to the design if we um. Look at the building design. You can see that we used elements of the modern farmhouse to give it a nice appeal. For the residents as well as work with the surrounding Sherburne area, which has a a nice rural feel to it. Using the mix of gables and shed roofs and then the board and bat and clapboard siding. We incorporated a little bit taller cottage style windows to give it that that sense of style. We incorporated colors to accent that and point out the features on the building. We also have the the deck decks with the closets next to them, offering a different roof shape at the top. So as the whole overall scheme comes together, could reflect maybe a neighborhood of houses along that facade. The um. If we want to go next to the units. Well, when we saw Pierre, I forgot this one was inserted in here, so why don't we work with this one for now and then we'll go to the US. On the left is a picture from Coolidge Street. That's in front of you. There is the existing house that's on this this site that will be taken down and this will be roughly where the. Project entrance is, as you can see on the right, it's just to the left of the picture. Uh, and the site plan, this is where the bus station is that's proposed at some point. Um, and in the back, there's a clubhouse. Over in the right side of the picture, break through a little bit of the leaves there, you could see a bit of the uh three story building in the background. So you can see how this placement of the clubhouse, making use of some existing. Plantings which are on the right and then the new plantings on the left. Offers a good screen and buffer to the overall site right at the. Near the project entrance. The left, the the pictures on the bottom, the left one again is existing. It's a little bit more to the right of where we were. There is an existing open field, as you can see there. Um, at the back of this field area would be the clubhouse activity, outdoor activity area with one of the garages. And then the three story building in the background, still offering some screening and minimizing the impact of the project on the streetscape. And offering still some of that existing. Terrain that you see currently now will be in the project when it's completed along that front area. So if you go to the next one, I think we can get into the buildings. So it's. Double loaded corridor with the ones, twos and three bedroom units spread out through the building, two bedrooms at the end. With the three story scheme, what it also offered for us is. The corner units, when you have three buildings versus one or two, you get more corner units at the ends. So it provides some great units for the residents at the ends, along with ones in the middle, still have the deck and a nice. Uh, window out the front back back offering great. Corporation of the site and surrounding wooded areas. Um, you also have plenty of light coming in. The finishes inside would be representative of what you would see in your. Own single family homes, um, offering a class A's, what we call apartments for the project. Um, and then the systems inside are very simple and efficient. For, but they're independent for each unit and they have control over their own um. Systems within the, within the project, within their unit. So we can go to the next one. Here's the front facade, as you'd see it on a elevation view, so you can get a better sense of how the elements break up the. Yeah, the front and back of the building and give it a sense of smaller scale. You might even suggest that the resident could pick out areas that reflect the individual units inside. And that's what we try to do with this kind of layout. Next, please. So here are the units, as was outlined before, the square footage is such, needs to be very comfortable. Well received units, um, offering good spaces for all the standard living spaces that you would have in there. Open plan is more popular today. You can see all the kitchens open up into the living spaces and offer a good. Open plan that we've been using more and more in our projects. Uh, next, please. So here's the clubhouse, upper left is leasing office area. Next to that, to the right is a living room type space with a vaulted ceiling. Uh, next beyond that would be a what I call a kitchen dining and somewhat of a sports bar type area with the TVs and high top tables. So people can gather in various areas around it, but still be connected to each other and make good use of it during different activities that may be going on. Continue a little further to the right, you move it outside with the pergola and the fire pits for the residents to use. And then beyond that would be the grill and pool and activities that you saw before. Going across the bottom is, that's called the business area with the conference room, two offices. And then to the right is the fitness center with the yoga room in the lower right corner. Just above that is an outdoor TV viewing area, which fine is um very attractive for the residents. Down the middle is the center core that would bring you in from the parking on the left as you come into the end uh project. Giving that center spine that gets you out to the right where the gathering areas are with everything off that center spine. Then if you can um. The next one, yeah, there's the elevation, so you can see all the gables and different roof lines and cool places and different elements on it. Break down even the size of this and the smaller elements reflecting the different spaces within. So I think we achieved a very comfortable project for the tenants, for the. For the people visiting the site, appropriate for the site. Uh, we've taken advantage of the surrounding area and the features that are available. Use of the natural and added screening to minimize the impact on the street and 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 the residents in the area. Uh, we've been sympathetic to the Sherburne area in terms of our design, I believe, and arrived at something I feel very comfortable with. Um, and the, and for the residents. This is something I think is a, is a familiar look that people. Trump be drawn to for living there and feel comfortable living there for the empty nesters or young couples looking for places to stay. And live in uh Sherburne area. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob Mashad for the traffic study. Thank you very much.
Oh, Bob, I think you're on mute. I, I can't hear you. I think you're not connected to the sound. Still can't hear you, sorry. Hopefully he'll.
He's unmuted.
He's unmuted.
But, but, but I've had this problem sometime on Zooms. If he logs out and logs back in, he may get a better connection because sometimes his.
Bob, do you want to try that, logging out, logging back in?
When it happened to me, my HDMI cable connecting the laptop up to a larger screen, I decided it was smarter. Bob, how's that? Rob?
We still can't hear you, Bob.
God, maybe you could summarize uh for us uh the traffic study and we can always move back to it later.
Uh, um, I can, this is our, sort of our, our last uh part of our project. Uh, is, is Dan on?
He's muted.
And do you think uh you you could get a start on traffic a little bit until Bob was able to uh get in? He might be calling in, I'm unsure.
Uh, yeah. Let me uh move down here.
Okay, um.
Rob, if you, if you've logged in on your phone, turn off your computer because now we're getting them both.
How's this?
Good. You're sideways, but what the heck?
Okay. Oh, okay. I apologize. Um, thank you. Uh, for the record, Robert Mee Show, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. Um, we've con- conducted a comprehensive traffic impact and access study. Um, we've done that to an industry standard and we have. Uh, prior experience with this particular assemblage of properties uh in the Trask days, so to speak. Where we had collected traffic data uh in two thousand and sixteen uh pre-COVID and that's an important point. Uh, we have. Fundamentally looked at what traffic conditions are today uh in September of this year, actually, and we do acknowledge that. Under today's COVID situation, that the traffic volumes in and around this area are down by about twenty percent or so. So the basis of the traffic study uh actually relies on using the two thousand and sixteen uh data, which is much more representative of a typical uh condition. And we've actually grown that up to represent a twenty twenty condition. And in the context of um the traffic study, looking into the future. Have projected that yet again uh seven years into the future. And so that all conforms with current industry practices and practices. During the COVID era that Mass DOT endorses. Um, so the study area that we look at is is College Street. Uh, not only at the site itself, but at both the northerly and uh near the Natick line where it meets Speed Street. And Kendall Street and then to the east and southeast uh where it meets Route twenty seven or North Main Street. And those are represented uh by the, the red dots that you see in this locust map. Uh, the next slide uh gives you some context as to the traffic volume conditions um. O- on the quarter, we know that Coolidge Street uh carries on the order of just under eleven thousand vehicles uh per day. On a typical weekday and during the traditional peak hours in the morning and the evening. Uh, just under a thousand vehicles per hour or roughly about five hundred vehicles traveling in each travel direction. East and west um during those uh peak hours. Uh, the next slide uh presents a snapshot of what the peak hour traffic lines look like at the two uh so-called gateway. Intersections that exist on either side of College Street, on the Natick side, and then again on the Route twenty seven side. And uh it it presents some very interesting patterns in that uh roughly um half of the travel that uses. Coolidge uh street is oriented either east or west. It's relatively balanced. But as you begin to look at the intersection of Route twenty seven to the east, uh, there's very little left turn activity uh there. Uh, the predominant travel patterns actually favor the right turn movement to get onto Route twenty seven uh to the south and toward. Um, the downtown area, so to speak, not, not so much headed back up to Natick. Um, whereas on the other side uh of the intersection, you'll see um uh slightly more balanced uh shift in traffic. Uh, but a higher percentage going toward Speed Street, which as the board uh knows. Ultimately connects to the Mass Pike and the Route ninety quarter. Um, these are representative of uh today's twenty ten, twenty twenty uh traffic conditions adjusted. Uh, to reflect uh the the so-called COVID adjustment, right? So these are actually very representative of a typical um peak hour. That one would see absent the COVID, COVID effect. The next slide uh presents a snapshot of what we expect the project itself to generate for traffic. Uh, these projections are based on uh traffic uh. Trip generation methodology that's well recognized in the industry. Using ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers uh trip, applying those standards. Uh, that the project itself is a very modest traffic generating use. Uh, that over the course of an entire day on a weekday, we could expect to see about three hundred to three hundred and twenty-five vehicles either coming into the property or leaving the property. For a total of just over six hundred and fifty uh total inbound and outbound trips per day. Uh, and that compares to the eleven thousand, roughly eleven thousand cars per day that currently use uh College Street. During peak hours, um, most trips would be exiting in the morning um in the traditional patterns of commuter travel. At about thirty cars per hour or one vehicle every two minutes. Uh, and the reverse coming back in in the evening hours uh at about the same number, about thirty or so trips. Coming back into the development per hour, one vehicle every two minutes. Uh, in the aggregate. The snapshot, if you're standing at the driveway itself, uh, you would see on the order of between forty-three and fifty-three total entering and exiting vehicles per hour. Or on average between uh uh roughly about one vehicle per minute on average, very modest uh volumes. The next slides um uh present uh uh the condition in which we take those trips and we assign them. Uh, to a travel route and that is done using US Census Journey to Work Information. Shortest path uh trip assignment as well as observed existing travel patterns on area roads. And we know that uh about fifty-five percent or just over half of the trips that would be generated by this use would be uh headed to or from the west. Uh, principally to the Speed Street quarter, which as I mentioned, connects to the Mass Turnpike, to Route nine, to the shopping opportunities on Route nine, et cetera. Uh, whereas um you'll see to the east, a little less than half uh of that trip activity um along those, those roadways. So if you looked at individual turning movements during this uh particular example weekday morning peak hour. You'll see that uh there are no specific movements, individual movements here that would generate any more than about. Uh, ten or fifteen new trips over the course of an entire hour. Uh, and in many cases, much less than that. So this, these represent very, very modest traffic increases. The next slide presents the equivalent weekday evening peak hour. Um, and uh, and those patterns are very similar, but tend to be reversed in pattern. And we don't need to dwell on that. Uh, it just simply emphasizes the point that these are very modest. These um uh larger arrow format uh diagrams that uh Todd is showing right now would indicate the total number of two-way vehicle trips. That we would expect during those peak hours. Uh, and you'll see that uh again, these traffic volumes represent a very small percentage of existing baseline traffic. In and around area roadways, not uh anything that would, in our opinion, uh create uh a material impact. To traffic flow in and around uh the area. Uh, the next slide. Uh, is simply the evening representation, again with the same finding and the next slide. Uh, then allows us to begin looking at the driveway itself and how it is designed. In the conduct of conducting traffic counts, uh, we also looked at travel speeds along College Street. Uh, we know that the regulatory posted speed limits are at thirty-five miles an hour. But that the so-called eighty-fifth percent percentile speeds are a bit higher than that. They're about forty-four miles an hour. Uh, and on that basis, we wanted to ensure that the driveway itself provided ample visibility for a vehicle. Uh, when leaving the property to see and react to. An oncoming vehicle, to be able to properly select a gap in traffic, to be able to make a uh a safe movement. Um, that's known as intersection site distance. Uh, the ASHTO and other publications. Site minimum criteria that should be met based on travel speeds. Uh, we know that uh the sightlines at the driveway here being uh positioned and designed. will exceed the minimum requirement, depending on which travel direction you're looking, just over 300 feet or close to almost 400 feet in one example. So this diagram indicates that the sight lines that will be provided at the driveway will exceed those minimum recommended standards for safety. The next slide presents the outcome of an auto turn analysis. This is a computerized model swept path analysis that is based in this particular example on the largest potential responding vehicle that would need to access and circulate within the property. This is the nearly 40-foot ladder truck that is operated by the fire department. And the swept path analysis indicates that the driveway geometry and orientation, as well as the internal circulation aisles and parking layout, properly accommodate all of the swept paths of that largest responding vehicle. And I'll point the board's attention to the upper portion of this diagram. This actually allows for a so-called hammerhead type or T-type area that would allow that responding vehicle to reverse direction to exit the property. However, as Todd mentioned earlier, there will be a gated connection that connects to Meadowbrook so that the fire department would not necessarily have to make that movement. They could simply proceed to the Meadowbrook driveway and exit as an alternative to this particular diagram. So the conclusion here is we meet all of the applicable swept path requirements for that vehicle. Finally, in conclusion, many of these points have already been covered by Todd and others during the presentation, but we find that this project is, in fact, a very modest generating use. It will not result in a material change in traffic operations at any one of the area roadways that we've assessed them, that movements in and around area roadways and intersections are at a level of service C or better. That's actually a fairly modest delay scenario. The only exception to that would be the left turn from College Street onto Route 27, North Main Street, which is a very low-volume movement today and will be very marginally impacted by the project at fewer than about five vehicle trips per hour making that same movement. So there is ample capacity to accommodate this use. The driveway will meet the applicable sightline standards for safety. And I'll also point out that the study in the next slides confirm that there are no high-crash locations that exist either in the vicinity of the subject property or at the two gateway intersections, east and west. These locations, in fact, have an average crash rate that's about half that of the Commonwealth on average. So these are not high-crash locations. We don't expect there to be a need for safety countermeasures as a result. Finally, there are components of the project that will encourage non-automobile type travel. I don't need to go into details, other than to say that there will be a complete system of sidewalks that provide accessibility to the trail systems that were mentioned earlier. There will be bicycle parking amenities within the property. And as Roy had started off and as Todd had mentioned, the applicant, the proponent continues to work with the MWRTA to provide appropriate bus stop design and location along College Street to encourage that mode of transportation. So with that, I will hand it back to Stephanie and be prepared to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And so this is going to basically conclude our presentation to the board this evening. And in terms of next steps, as you see on the screen, we're assuming that the board may want to come out to the property to do a sidewalk, and then from there, launch into further public hearings on the project. And somewhat is what we found works well is to have more topical type of hearings. What that does is it's very effective in terms of responding to specific questions at the board or any municipal staff that's reported into the zoning board. And it provides for a pretty streamlined review process to further, I guess, emphasize the streamlined review and report being general. And so I think with that, if the board has any questions or anyone on the team, we're very happy to respond and to take your comments, provide you additional information if we don't have it for you this evening. Thank you.
That's terrific. I had a couple of initial questions. I'm sure there are going to be lots of them. Robert, in terms of the traffic study, what were your assumptions about Meadowbrook Crossing?
Sorry. Thank you for bringing that up. We've actually included that as a background project assumption, meaning that we've estimated the traffic activity for that project and added it into the so-called no build, future no build traffic volume condition. So we've not only accounted for the impact of this particular project, we've also accounted for the impact of that adjoining project, as well as normal area background growth at a rate of about half percent annually over a seven-year time period.
Okay. And this one is to Todd as the stand-in understudy civil engineer. Obviously, the water and sewer agreement is not in place today. In theory, you could do that on your own, although since I've been in the development business myself, I'm guessing that if the Meadowbrook Crossing deal doesn't go, the cost of getting water and sewer down on your own is pretty daunting. And so what can you tell us about that? And, you know, it's always hard to predict in development where you are in a project, what's going to happen. It's two developers in two towns. I'm sure you've got a great forecast. That's every good, everybody's good as presidential pollsters, and we want to hear your forecast.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind my picking that up, because I've been in constant communication with Mark Mascheriani at Paulty. And I think it'd be pretty hard to do worse than the pollsters, if you don't mind my saying that.
That's why you were teed up that way. Please keep going.
So obviously, whenever, if you're so inclined to eventually give us approvals, it'll obviously be subject to us having water and sewer. We understand that. I will tell you that there's ongoing discussions with Natick and with Framingham for the water in the sewer. And we're hoping that progresses to a point in a relatively reasonable point of time, where once we're getting approvals, hopefully from your board, that those should be in place or should be in place shortly thereafter.
And just to add on that, the last update from Mark Mascheriani was that they're well on their way to finalizing the mitigation impact agreements for Natick, and those are underway in Framingham as well. So we are making good progress, though it is a, it will take some time for those to be finalized.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is not next week and not five years from now, and other than that, you're doing the best you can?
Yes.
All right, fair enough. And I'm sure we'll hear a lot more about that subject night, and I bet peer reviewers will want to probe it a little bit.
We will keep you updated as we move forward.
Okay. Fellow board members, I think I heard Stephanie sort of lay out a proposal for going forward that, at least in my ear, had some appeal in terms of trying to line up sidewalks and things like that. I know that when DHCD did their sidewalk, they, it's not the right way to say it, but I'll say it anyway, disinvited everybody due to COVID. And I'm not sure that everybody on every board in town thought that was a fabulous way to run the sidewalk. So to the extent that the developer team wants to propose a sidewalk, I bet that will be welcome. Fellow board members, what do you think? Should we try to use follow her next steps? Or do you have a different plan? We can try to talk about peer reviewers tonight. Clearly, we've got a long way to go here, a lot of wood to chop. Jonathan, Ron?
Well, I'd say that the proposed next steps make sense to me. I would like to have a sidewalk scheduled. And we should be setting up focused hearing times. And there also should be discussion of town consultant peer review.
Right. Maybe a way to approach this, if it appeals to the applicant and the other board members and the other interested parties, is that we try to pick a next hearing time, you know, several weeks out, and that we invite the developer to propose a sidewalk before that. And then the interested board members who wish, various boards who wish to and can safely come, and I bet our Board of Health will advise us on the right COVID way to do that. You're very active and smart on that.
Chairman, if I could.
Please.
Why don't you decide what's good for you on the sidewalk? We'll make sure we're there.
Okay. Fair enough. In that case, I think maybe as part of our next process, fellow CBA members will invite the Board of Health to coach us up on what can safely be done in terms of how many people could be there at a given time. But it would seem that if everyone is masked and we're outside and stay away from each other, it's a very large site. This ought to be doable. All right, so we will take the initiative. We'll get back to you with a date on that.
I'd like to ask the question about the sidewalk. Would it be possible to locate some of the buildings for the walk? Maybe stakes at the corner of the clubhouse, that kind of thing?
We had them stake the, where DHCD walked, a couple of the stakes found legs and locked away, but mostly 90% of them are there. We'll make sure they're all there for the next sidewalk.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Ron, I was actually on the sidewalk, and while it wasn't perfect, you could definitely find where things were. And I bet they'll probably stake a few more things.
Yeah, I didn't do the last one.
Right. Gino Carlucci, are you on?
Oh, okay. I thought I could not unmute myself because I was muted by the host, but yes, I'm on.
Okay, so maybe one thing we might ask is that you get in touch with the development team before the next hearing and maybe be able to come back to us with a suggested group of peer reviewers or single peer reviewer. You've done a good job with us in the past in terms of lining up the right people to look at this, that, and the other. And I'd like to tap into you again if you're willing to serve.
Sure.
All right. Next hearing. And by the way, before we close tonight, we will invite the assembled multitudes to ask questions, particularly if they have showstoppers. Obviously, nobody's rights are being foreclosed tonight. If someone thinks of another question later, it's perfectly fine to raise it. But what about dates for our next hearing, board members? Tonight is the 10th. We have, I think, another hearing on another matter on the 3rd of December. Do I have that right, Gini?
That's right.
Okay, so sometime after December 3rd, if we went out into, as we said in the other matter, there are going to be a whole lot fewer holiday parties interfering. Something in that second week in December. Jonathan, Ron, who at work?
Would that be like the 10th, thereabouts?
Let me catch up with you, but I think that's right.
It's okay with me.
That's okay with me.
Is that a Tuesday?
It is.
Thursday.
All right.
All right, Thursday, December 10, 7:00 PM. Going once? Going twice? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that's our next hearing. Now, anyone who has questions for the development team, they're here to answer them for you. Your answers may not be definitive tonight, but... And if people want to either speak up, or you can use the chat to try to raise your hand. I think we can also see if people have hands raised. Todd, can you take down the screen? Thank you. We'll be able to see more people. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. I don't see waving or anybody's hand raised, which is probably fine. Development team?
If you're looking for a question, they do have.
Yes. Please identify yourself, Daryl Beardsley.
Daryl Beardsley, 54 Forest Street. I am asking these questions as a resident, as opposed to a board official. So as I look at the pictures, it kind of made me think of when I lived in Cambridge and some of the, like, the streetscape view of the buildings is a little bit more like Cambridge. And frankly, even in Cambridge, things were a little more muted scale in Cambridge port. So in any case, when you showed some of the pictures, one thing I was wondering is, on the three-story building, it looked like the pitch of the roof is such that it looks like another story and a half. So in terms of fitting in with the scale of Sherborne, is it possible to have, you don't have to answer all these now, but is it possible to have a lower pitch roof so it's not so massive? Or would it be possible to maybe beef that up a little bit? Reduce the other two stories to two and have a large roof area, but also have living space underneath it, so with dormers and the like. So that would be one. And pretty much the same question about the clubhouse. That had the one story, but the roof itself looked about the equivalent of two stories. So all of that, from the street perspective, is just... There's some dissonance with the rest of Sherborne, Woodson Sherborne, especially even just driving in on College Street. And then the other question, again, on the, is I don't know if there are restrictions on where you can place the buildings, give them setback from wetlands, but if it would be possible to move the buildings, at least the first building, once you're in there, that's something different, but it would be nice if driving in it also felt a little bit more Sherborne-like, that there was more green space between the sidewalk and the building to allow for more plantings in that and kind of soften it and make it less like an urban street and more like a rural or suburban. So again, don't have to answer those now, but those were just.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a few comments about some of that?
Yes, well, let me make a qualification first, which is that, and I sort of started with this. Daryl, like me and like an awful lot of us, like Marian, has multiple hats. She's a board member of an important board, the Board of Health. I'm betting you were making those comments and you're wearing your private citizen hat, Daryl. And so we'll just clarify that. They're equally legitimate, but I don't want people to be confused. Go ahead, Rick.
Okay, listen, I appreciate your comments. I will say that the renderings that you saw this evening were just recently completed today, so they don't truly reflect the landscaping that we're planning on doing. So I think when you look at the one where you see the three-story building, you will see the building, however, that building is back significantly more than what was originally proposed in a previous proposal. That building is anywhere from 150 to 170 feet back from College Street. So it's two-thirds of the length of the football field almost from the street. So it's significantly far back. The clubhouse, I think, once you see that fully landscaped, I think it'll allay some of your fears relative to that, as well the landscaping for the building further back. They're very tightly fitted at this point, given the wetlands on all sides of us. So I think in acquiring the additional parcel of land next door or putting it under agreement, it gave us the opportunity to not only break down the mass of the buildings, but move one of the buildings much further back into the site where you almost don't see it because it's behind a forested area. And as far as roof pitches go, Rob, if you could unmute yourself and let you talk about the roof pitches.
Yeah, the roof pitches were set, they actually had them a little more shallow at one point and didn't, in my opinion, feel, reflected the farmhouse style. Looking at other projects that use that style, I noticed the roof pitches, the 10 and 12 on the small gables along the front really had a better feel to them, reflecting that style of that for those areas. The large roof that covers from front to back is. that covers from front to back is, I think, a five or six to twelve pitch. It's actually fairly shallow slope. But it's not seen as much as the front ones, and so the front ones really dictate the appearance of the of the project. The same slope is carried over onto the clubhouse, but I tried to start their spring points from narrower areas to try to bring them down in size. I had another project where the roof started at all the corners of the clubhouse, and it did get a little overwhelming, but it worked quite nicely for that project. In this project, I tried to minimize the roof and brought it down quite a bit from this other one by doing that where the gable is from corner to corner, it's partially across the face of it elevation. And I thought that still helped reflect that farmhouse style that I'm seeing in driving around New England, and that you see the high peak, which is common to New England and thought would be appropriate for this project.
Yeah, and that's an issue for further discussion. Marian, I saw your electronic hand raised, and I know you'll start by clarifying which of your many hats you're wearing.
All right, this is Marian Neidra, twenty-five Prospect Street. I am sort of sort of wearing my planning board hat. This is nothing that we voted on a planning board, but I want it. But it does reflect a discussion that we had at our last planning board meeting on this. And that is the probability that there will be at least a few kids in this development. We don't know how many, probably not a huge number, but if there are even a couple of school kids, a school bus has to pick them up. And we're concerned about the the bus stop design. It does not look like a safe place for a bus to be able to pull off from either direction to pick up kids. So if there's a possibility of of enlarging that bus stop with with some separation between the road and the bus area and allowing somehow the bus to be able to enter from both directions. It's something that the school buses are eventually going to have to deal with, so we should build that into the design.
All right.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Michael Lester, I think you have your electronic hand raised next.
Sure. Hi, Michael Lester, fifty-four Forest. I guess I'll speak as an energy committee member. I'll just wear that hat since I also have the conservation. But I just coming back to the roof stuff that was being talked about earlier, I just want to bring up, you've talked about it before, to what extent the design reflects some sort of ability to increase the amount of solar capacity that you might be able to easily put on the roof without it being broken up, obviously, and I don't know. And obviously, the plot determines the orientation of the building, so it's a little harder to maximize that. But to what extent you can just reflect whether there's some design issues that could maximize the the solar potential on the rooftops. And I don't know whether it's worth it to I think it's hard. I'm not a big fan of the ground mount sort of canopy kind of stuff for various reasons, but there's also that potential. And so at some point, you could see whether that could be factored in. And as well as I'll just say that it's been an ongoing discussion, I'll say for others that there's been a little back and forth, an ongoing discussion with myself and somebody else, John Hyde in town with John Hyde in town with about the efficiency of the design and this whole passive house concept. And that's been a topic that they've that the base stone has been addressing to some extent that we need to talk a little bit more about whether there's a way to still proceed with including that in in this, even though it's 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 not a simple issue. But I appreciate that you've at least continued the discussion, but excuse me, I promise my voice. But that that we hopefully can still continue that going forward is to see whether at least some feasibility work can at least be done. Although it's an important issue that any feasibility work is started sooner than later to see if it really, because it does influence the design and it's too hard to do it later. But hopefully, we could talk soon again about that again. Thank you.
All right.
Just respond to just quickly a couple of things. One is the six-twelve roof pitch on top is actually the correct pitch for solar panels, and there's nothing new that needs to be added if that is ever entertained in the future from a structural point of view, they go quite nicely on the roof. And as far as the energy efficiencies, we do incorporate a lot of energy efficiency techniques that we picked up along the way from the advanced framing we talked about, the high efficiency units that we put in to the projects, cellulose insulation. These projects perform extremely well without having to go much further than into the passive house, but I am working on some passive house right now, and I plan to incorporate things where I see that are easily done in a project and get people ready to embrace those kind of things as we go work them into other projects as well. But you'll find this project performs very well for energy efficiencies overall to begin with.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address the solar panels, we're actually, we've had many discussions with Michael about solar panels, about passive house. We're actually in discussions with solar panel companies to talk about the possibility and the feasibility of doing solar panels on these buildings so that we have ongoing discussions. We've also been doing some analysis on the potential of passive house, looking at the costs and benefits of it. And there's no question there are benefits. The question becomes, given an overall project cost, can one afford to do passive house in a project like this? And we are still in the process of gathering information, cost analysis, et cetera, and we'll keep everyone abreast as to how that works out.
Great, thank you very much. Further questions this evening? Does not foreclose anybody asking other questions later. Genie, I don't think I see any. Do you?
I think you're good.
All right, gentlemen, board members, I would be gleeful to entertain a motion to continue the hearing to seven P M. On the tenth of December.
Well, I will make such a motion, Rick. This hearing be continued until December tenth at seven P M.
All right. And I forgot to mention, so I'll offer a friendly mention amendment that we direct the town planner, Gino Carlucci, to come back to us before then, if to the extent feasible, with a suggestions as to peer reviewers, which he has discussed with the development team. And it'll be up to us, the board, to try to, if we want to do a sidewalk before that date, to make a proposal to the board to the developer. So I guess my only amendment is that is that we direct Gino to come back to us with peer review recommendations. And I'd second the motion with that amendment.
Second?
Further discussion among the board members?
No.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Harry's three to nothing. All right, everybody, thank you very much for your patience. We'll talk to you all on the tenth. Hopefully, there'll be a sidewalk before then. Long way to go on this project, but a really good start. Thank you to the development team for a good, clear, crisp presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Bye.
Aye.